Ms. Alford, would you check the roll for us this morning?
Mr. Alford?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Landry?
Here.
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 The first motion of order this morning is to approve the agenda for today. Do I hear a motion to approve this morning's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is in favor of the stated motion, signify by raising your right hand. Take this opportunity to welcome visitors. It's great to look out and see this nice crowd this morning. I realize that a lot of you are here because your children are winning some award, and that's something we look forward to also. We love to see students of Henry County Public Schools receive the recognition that they have earned during the course of the year. We also appreciate guests, members of the staff, to attendance this morning. This time I'll ask Reverend Alford if he will lead us in prayer. And Mr. Sayer, will you do the pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we ask you this morning to give us wisdom and strength to open our hearts and our minds to your will for the students, teachers, and administration of Henry County. Father, bless our decisions, anoint them, we pray, in the name of Christ our Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move to the second item on our agenda this morning, public comment. I believe we do have some individuals or an individual who wishes to address the board. Let me read this notice before we get started. This now is a time for public comment. This means that we're here to listen to you, not to engage in a question and answer period or debate. Upon arrival at the podium, please state your name, your subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you have agreed that you will exhibit respect for this board and its members, as well as the staff and students of the Henry County Public Schools. You will receive the same consideration from our board. We ask that please keep your comments to three minutes. Do we have an individual who wishes to come forward? Mr. Smith?
My name is Giles Smith. I live in the city of Martinsville. I'm the president of GCS Electronics and Communications in Martinsville. Well, thank you all for the time to speak up here today, here to address the agenda item for the radio system, for the school bus system. A little bit about us, for those of you who don't know us, we've been in business for 25 years. We're a Kenwood Communications Channel Partner. We have designed, built, installed, and maintained some of the largest Kenwood radio systems in the state of Virginia. A little bit closer to home for you folks, if any of you all have called 911 for police, fire, or EMS services in the past 20 years, you've been impacted by one or more of our services, most notably the 911 center in this building. I'm here today to kind of discuss my feelings on the radio system on the agenda today. About three years ago, one of our employees, our IT manager, a former Henry County School student, wanted to initiate some conversation with the Bus Garage in order to improve the current VHF radio system that you all are using today. Since that time, we have worked off and on on this project to try to get this system improved for you all, not only to increase the efficiency, but more importantly, to increase the safety of the personnel and the students. We got a notification that an FCC license had been issued earlier this year, and reached back out and found that the radio system was on the verge of happening. Eventually, an RFP was issued. There were some 35 pages of intense specifications that were issued with that. A lot of specifications in there were some important, some not. Some of the more important specifications were not in the list. Some of the things such as 911 mapping integration for the buses, no specification in there for that. What does that mean? Does that mean the dispatchers will, the 911 center will know where the buses are if there's an emergency? No specification in there for that. There's no specification for how emergencies will be handled on the buses with the dispatchers. There are a number of other places in there where things are, the most important things are not in the specification list, and that's my concern with it. You know, these types of systems are, they're not just the, the goal is not just to make a decision, but to make a difference, to make a difference in response times, to make a difference in how emergencies are handled. You know, you folks have approximately 100, you have approximately 15 assets that you're trying to secure. You spend millions, hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars trying to secure those assets, and they're called schools. You have approximately 150 assets out there that you hope to secure, and they're called school buses. School buses are the hardest asset in your system to try to secure. We feel that effective communications for these buses are certainly important. We certainly feel that the specifications did not cover that. We, like several others, made a response to this RFP. We do not feel our system is adequate. We tried to respond to the specifications in some manner to be respective to the opportunity to be vivid on this, but we do not even feel our specifications or our responses is sufficient for this. So we certainly would like to do business with the school system, we'd certainly like to improve the system, but we think that it should be done and cover all the specifications and all the needs that you have. Lastly, on that, there was some mention in there about the end of this year being end-of-life support to the current system and it being some critical nature. I've made the offer before, I'll make it again, if it helps you to get past that time until you have sufficient time to put an effective system in place, we will provide a spare repeater system for you at no charge, will maintain it, and will be responsible for it until you come off the VHF system. And maybe that'll remove the criticalness of this and give you time to do something more effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there other individuals that wish to address the board this morning? Here are none, we'll move on to item three on our agenda, awards and recognition. Awards and recognition, Ms. Milner?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We are excited this year that we were able to continue the First Generation Scholarship Program for qualifying seniors in Henry County Public Schools. Each recipient will receive $1,000 that is funded through local business partnerships and Henry County Public Schools. A first-generation college student is a student who is the first in his or her family to attend college. The student must write, must have written a 500-word essay, submit a copy of their high school transcript, and submit two letters of recommendation. At this time, I would like to ask for Dr. Cotton and Dr. DeVal to please come down, and we would like to recognize our First Generation Scholarship recipients. And students, when I call your name, if you would please come up and greet Dr. DeVal and Dr. Cotton. Our first recipient, Yanisse Balderas Montesinos. Tyler Bray. Allison Deal. Taysha Dillard. Bianca Dotson, and I know she was not able to be with us today. Juan Gonzalez. Shadasia Hairston. Natalie Lovelace. Jennifer Silva. Andrew Wiggington. And last, but certainly not least, Jillian Wilkins, and he was not able to be with us again. Let's give these students a round of applause.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have additional awards this morning, and one of the first ones is for some of our adults, and we're very excited to have Ms. Whitlow here from the Bus Garage to share with you information about our bus rodeo participants and winners.
Good morning. I have to say that this is like a proud mother moment for me because coming into this position July the 1st, I have not worked with a group of individuals that are so inspiring and family-oriented. We are truly a family at the Bus Garage. So they're a great group of individuals, so Region 6 Bus Rodeo became talked about through my first little bit of meetings that we had, and I thought, wow, this would be a great experience for my drivers. So I brought it to light, and we had tremendous individual drivers reaching out. They did offer practice for the drivers. This started before the first of the year, and they were able to go to Roanoke Mountain Valley Transportation to practice for the bus rodeo on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And to show you how dedicated our drivers are, many of them did not miss a Tuesday or Thursday unless there was weather, and so they would finish their route, they would meet at the Bus Garage, travel to Roanoke, practice all day, return back to the garage at 2:00 so they could get on their bus to do their afternoon routes. So that sheer dedication, and while we were at the garage, they were mentioned numerous times on, the people that have to set up the rodeo were so pleased that they had someone come and to participate in practice, and really, they were trying to get my drivers. So I had to quickly make my parents up there and not let that happen. So with that being said, they even expressed interest in us setting up some type of bus rodeo facility here in Henry County. It's a great experience, it keeps them on their toes, they do get complacent sometime with everyday rituals that they do, so this sort of brought it to light and made them really think in depth of the safety that they have carrying children on the bus. So with that being said, I would like to recognize the individuals who did participate. Stefan Spencer. Donna Stallings. Elton Milner, he was unable to be here this morning. Lisa Duncan, she's running some routes for us right now. Leon Turner. Mr. Bruce Hagee, he's out of town. Missy Minnick is running routes for us. James Shelton. Randy Carter. Sean Foley. And Sharon Gilbert. And out of these participants, we did have Henry County first, second, and third place. Lisa Helms finished the rodeo in third place. We would like to congratulate her on that. Teresa Lumpkin. She's a second-place winner. If you ever need a bus in a very small area, she can put it there. And the winner, and it's Mr. Joe Ellison, he won for Henry County, so he will be representing Henry County Public School Transportation at the Region 6 in Roanoke at the VAPT Conference to compete for state. Joe Ellison. Thank you all for your time.
In addition to those really important adults, we have some students to recognize today as well. As you know, at one of our last meetings, we recognized the Park Young Writers Contest winners from the elementary level, and today, we want to recognize the middle school winners from that competition. Our Park Young Writers Contest winners, all from FC Middle School, by the way, were Trinity Gilbert, Logan Lewis, and Kayla Wood, and we'd like to ask them to come forward. Thank you, guys. Additionally, we have some students who submitted artwork to the VSBA Regional Conference that we typically attend, and for the region, two of our students won prizes. So Mr. Milner would be very happy because he was always very passionate about us submitting for the VSBA Art Show, and so we want to recognize the artwork and accomplishment of Jaden Wagner from FC Middle School and Scotland Pruitt from Magnavista High School. We also have some representatives with us today from Magnavista High School's state winners of the FFA Forestry Competition, and Mr. Holland can tell you in detail about how this is the first time we've had this state accomplishment, and I think you told me, Mr. Holland, the first ever for you and for our region, correct? Yes, so we want to recognize Andy Perry, Chris Robinett, Logan Thacker, and Line Ashworth, this one. We also have creativity on display for you today. For one of the first times, I think that's correct, Mr. Dunn, one of the first times ever submitting to the VHSL State Film Festival, we have some winners in our midst. Kay Troxell, Emily Maxey, and Caitlin Thompson submitted a video that they created, and it's complete animation, so a lot of work went into that particular video, and they won at the State Film Festival, so we'd like to ask them to come forward. And we do have a copy of that film that we'll be sharing with you in this week's board gram, probably. Additionally, I have the honor of presenting to you, or later this morning, our revised and updated strategic plan, which is going to be called Inspire 2025. And, you know, we had a team of adults who worked really hard to come together, to put that plan together and the content of that, but we wanted to feature students in some way in our plan, and so we reached out to the graphic design students in our high schools, and I'm excited to share their work with you when we go over the presentation. You do have the plan on a page in front of you. The graphics created for that plan were designed by our high school students, so we wanted to recognize them this morning, students from the graphic design class at Bassett High School, and those project contributors include Skylar Craig, McKinley Foley, Victoria Janey, Nam Barrera, Xavier Prunney, Kalen Thomas, Aleah Smith, and Amber Martin. And we're honoring them with certificates today, but I understand from their instructor that they are interested in being paid in food, so we're going to have lunch for them once they all come back together as a group at the start of school. And finally, on one of the very last days of school, Ms. Hilton called me from Laurel Park, and she said, hey, I have a group of students who've been working in the after-school writing club, and they have a video they want to show you, and we're going to show you the video this morning. It's amazing. Mr. Scott and I are very excited to use it as part of our safety training as we move forward in the school year, when we work with administrators and teachers, but we've also shared it with Eastman, one of our safety partners, and they hope to use pieces of the video as well, and the students are actually going to be posting their video live for the public to see, so we wanted to recognize them this morning and then share their video with you. The participants in that group with Mr. Kundaf, after-school at Laurel Park, are Taylor Hunley, Maeve McCulloch, Brianna Tatum, Corey Brandon, Kennedy Coleman, and Mariella Chacon.
We are now going into full lockdown. This is not safe for us.
I don't have the time for this. I forgot to set my streaks. Did I pay my cash? We almost made it to high school. Why didn't I tell my family I was going to? Will it make you that light?
When is this going to be over? This is just a drill, right?
I'm gonna die. I figured it would happen here too.
Who's poking?
What's going on? What's gonna happen?
What was that sound?
We feel that the motivation of the students at Laurel Park this year to promote safety and to encourage proper feelings and discussion about safety has been astounding as we've worked through and navigated some really important things that have happened in our country this year. So we think that this emphasis on how students feel about safety and about lockdown drills in particular will be really important for our staff members moving forward as they begin to think about the steps that we take every day to make our students feel safe at school. So we appreciate these ladies for coming today and representing their group, but for also the hard work that their club put into creating this for us without us asking. So I think they just knew that it was time and we needed that, so we appreciate that we'll be able to use this in training with our adults. Do you all have any questions?
Questions for the group?
Not a question, but I just want to make a comment. That's excellent work. That is, I almost got tears in my eyes. Thank you. Thank you. Excellent.
Mr. Kundaf?
Good job.
Echo my same thoughts to the group for a very pertinent and impressive presentation. I must apologize, earlier when we were doing the speakers from the floor, I did not notice this speaker had not signed up, so we're going to allow him to address the board at this time anyway. Mr. Stikoff, you'll come forward. You were in, I believe, when I read the conditions, please state your name and the district you represent, and remember to keep your comments to three minutes if possible.
I appreciate that, and I, and I want to say one thing, to give respect, you've got to give it, and I respect you guys 100% for what you're doing, and I don't expect any answers today. I don't, you know, the last thing I want to do is come up here and debate with anybody. I just wanted to bring some issues up before the board that I haven't got the answers to, and first off, it has to do with the benefits, and I support the benefits that the teachers are getting, I support the benefit that the deputies in all Henry County, the rank and file, and I'll fight for them to get their benefits, health insurance and such as that, because that makes Henry County stronger when we can give good benefits to, like I say, the rank and file. And, but the code of Virginia says that you guys can get the same benefits, but it also... But it also, you know, the governor and the legislature set it up and they put it in the code of Virginia, and you can get your benefits like free health insurance. But it also states in it that if you get it, you've got to get it in a manner and form that everyone else gets it. And I haven't been able to get a definition of that, what that means. And the school board is saying that it's a violation to your rights if the taxpayers know that you're getting free health insurance. I don't understand that. The last thing I want to do is violate anybody's rights, but I think the taxpayers need to know who's picking the money up off the table. And that's my opinion. And, you know, if a full-time employee gets the benefits, they've got to work a required number of hours to get it. I think the taxpayers need to know how many hours y'all are actually working to get this insurance. And there's more questions, but that's the main ones. And I think that we'll need to discuss that. And just like, just like I said, the people that's getting free health insurance, the code of Virginia says you've got to get it in a manner and form that other employees do. And I hadn't been able to get a definition on that. So I appreciate you, and I appreciate Dr. Cotton. He's a wonderful person. I hate to lose him. He's a very good person, all you guys are. Thank you, Dr. Cotton.
Thank you. Again, apologize for not noticing your hand waving when we went through this. But we appreciate your comments, and I'm not sure where we need to go to address them fully. I think probably what we do try to do is just provide state regulations. But we do appreciate you coming in and making your feelings known to the group. We'll move now to item five of the agenda, the consent agenda. We have a really lengthy consent agenda this morning. If there's, I think all the board members have seen the agenda, consent agenda. If there are specific questions for any item listed in that group, we can address them individually. Or Dr. Cotton, if you have questions about a specific area, is prepared to address that specific area. Are there questions at this time?
Take your information.
I'm really getting confused here. Well, first of all, since this has already been mentioned, are there any questions from the consent agenda? If not, can we hear a motion to approve that's presented?
So moved.
Second.
Now, a motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented. With no additional discussion or questions for Dr. Cotton, those in support of this motion signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. And we revert back to item four, information agenda. And we'll start first with energy conservation update. Mr. Atkins?
Thank you. I always like to go off script a little bit, so it upsets a few people in here. But I just want to, I was thinking this morning about you, Dr. Cotton. When we first came here, me and Keith came over and introduced ourselves, and I told Dr. Cotton, I said, I'm the energy manager. And eyebrow went up and it's like, what's a energy manager? First of all, I'd like to thank you for putting up with me these six years that you've been here. It's been a pleasure to work under you, and sometimes that eyebrow still gets something when I come around, so. Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, Dr. Cotton, I'm pleased to be back here sharing our annual energy conservation report. We have now completed the eighth year of our program. I guess I didn't pick up the clicker though. See how far behind I am? All right. Our energy program goal has remained the same, with our main focus of the program to save money for the classroom. As you can see, our objective goal is aligned with the Invision 2018 strategic plan, goal three, safe and orderly learning environment. Synergistic's projected the cost-avoided savings for Henry County Public Schools at the end of the 10th year would be $4 million. As we enter, as we end our eighth year, we are ahead of the estimated schedule with a cost savings of $4,759,000. This is over 200% return on our investment. This is just a quick breakout to show you that the expected energy cost, which is the amount estimated to spend without the program, would have been 17 and a half million dollars. As you can see, our actual energy cost has been 12.6 million dollars, which has given us a cost-avoided savings nearly 4.8 million dollars to pass 96 months. As you can see, our program has played a substantial role in reducing the carbon footprint for the division. We've reduced our greenhouse gases by 19,300 metric tons, and our program performance is equivalent to removing 4,000 cars from the road. Let me tell you about Energy Star certified buildings. Energy Star certified buildings are good for the environment and good for the bottom line. Energy Star certified buildings use an average of 35% less energy and are responsible for 35% fewer carbon dioxide emissions than typical buildings. Energy Star certified school buildings cost 50 cents less per square foot to operate than the average school building. Commercial buildings that earn EPA Energy Star must perform in the top 25% of similar buildings nationwide and must be independently verified by a licensed professional engineer or registered architect. And yet again, all K-12 schools received the Energy Star Award for 2017. As you can see by the picture, also presented each school principal their Energy Star Award during this, during their staff meetings. A little about EPA's 2018 Top City announcement. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency released its 10th annual list of the top U.S. metropolitan areas with the most Energy Star certified buildings. First released in 2009, the list of cities with the most Energy Star certified buildings continues to show how cities across America, with the help of Energy Star, are embracing energy efficient as a simple and effective way to save money and prevent pollution. Henry County is honored to be ranked on EPA's 2018 Top Small Cities list. As you can see, Martinsville is ranked number nine. Even though it shows the city, this is our award. It is our only, it is only recognized by cities in the community. Henry County is fully committed to environmental stewardship and lowering energy costs, as we are proud to be a leader in the nation in energy efficient buildings. Henry County and other, others on the list are leading the nation in energy efficient buildings, saving monies on operating costs and reducing, reducing emissions. Since 1999, more than 32,000 buildings across America has earned EPA's Energy Star certification. Together, these buildings have saved more than 4.5 billion on utility bills and prevented greenhouse gas emissions equal to the annual electricity use of more than 3 million homes. The annual Virginia School Boards Association Green School Challenge is a competition designed to encourage implementation of specific environmental policies and practices, actions that reduce the carbon emission generated by both the local school division and the broader community. This is the 90th year the award was given. We are a platinum certification winner. We were proud to achieve this platinum certification this year, thanks to our collaboration with Henry County to participate in the first green government challenge. U.S. Department of Education began the Green Ribbon Schools Recognition Award in the fall of 2011, and named the first cohort in April 2012. As you know, Magna Vista High School received this recognition in 2013, and Bassett High School has also received this prestigious award for 2015. I am honored to share with you that your district has been selected as a 2018 U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon Schools District Sustainability Awardee. Andrew Falcon, Director, U.S. Department of Education, Green Ribbon Schools Facility Health and Environment, recognized Henry County Public Schools with this statement. This award acknowledges your district's commitment to sustainability practice. We commend your district for its leadership in school facilities, health, and sustainability learning. You are representative of promising practices to improve achievement and equity, not only for inspiring green districts, but for all districts. So what impact does all this have on our employees? What do they want? A successful energy program helps deliver all these things. Good communication methods ensure that everyone knows the energy program can, has, and will help them achieve their goals. I would like to thank the board and the superintendent for initiating and supporting the program. Principals for leading the efforts. Teachers for reducing energy-wasting classrooms. Custodians for harnessing and operating the buildings, and maintenance staffs for ensuring well-maintained, efficient buildings. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Atkins. I remember many years ago, when we first got into this program, the board at that time had some, I guess, triptation, if that's the right term, about whether this would be money well-spent. I guess our question was, can't we do this on our own? And the board at that time went with the program and the assistance that those first few years from the company gave us, and your follow-up, and specifically, I think, the assistance and cooperation and buy-in of people out in the schools, our maintenance staff, and all the others who have helped us possible. It's, looking at that money served is, it's very rewarding, and we appreciate what all of those people have done and your leadership in assisting them in doing it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to thank Mr. Atkins, not only for this, but you all do know that he was our onsite administrator for Metto View, so he was there from the beginning all the way to the end, and he told me the other day, we need a new project, so I think we need... But thank you for your hard work on that. It has certainly paid off, and it looks beautiful, so thank you for your efforts.
Next item under this section, presentation of the division's strategic plan. Ms. Hatchett?
Good morning again. As I mentioned earlier, team members from school-based staff, administrators, central office, two of our school board members, teacher cabinet, parent cabinet, student cabinet, and members of our community have worked diligently over the last several months to prepare a strategic plan that will take us to 2025, because Invision 2018 is set to expire. So today, I would like to share with you Inspire 2025. This is a presentation for first reading, and we'll ask for your approval at the next June meeting. As I mentioned, students in our division have designed our logo and the graphics, and their motivation for the graphics that they gave us were the content that you'll see here in the plan and the things that our group shared with them. So Inspire 2025 is the proposed name for our new strategic plan. With the new strategic plan, we are proposing also a new vision, mission, and core value statement. And so the vision statement that the committee devised is inspiring learners to positively impact their world. We believe that it is crucial for members of our staff, our family members, and members of our community to not only be able to recognize our vision and mission statements, but to also have them memorized and say them and know them. When someone asks what Henry County's all about, we want them to be able to say that what we want to do every day is to inspire our learners. Additionally, we want them to be able to stand behind a mission that is something that they can also share with the community. So the mission that the team has devised is Henry County Public Schools provides our diverse community of learners with meaningful educational experiences that prepare them for a successful future. And if you ask Ms. Flanagan and Mr. Martin, they can tell you, we spent a lot of time talking about this particular statement and what it should encompass and what a successful future looks like for every type of Henry County Public Schools student. So we felt that this statement would be all-encompassing without limiting students to one particular path. We base that vision and mission on our core values, and the core values that the team devised were, we value respect, we act with integrity, we strive for excellence, we promote equity, and embold on purpose, we put students first, because that's what our teachers do every day, it's what every one of our staff members do every day, and it's what we want to partner with our parents and our community members to do as well. Our current strategic plan has five goal areas. We decided as a group that because technology is embedded in each of the goal areas, that we would integrate that and not make it a separate goal area for the new plan. So you'll see in the new plan, four goal areas, but each includes technology. The first goal area is high-quality instruction. Just as our last strategic plan's priority was high-quality instruction, we want to make sure that we provide high-quality curriculum, instruction, and assessment to prepare our students for success. The group has three areas under that particular goal, and that is curriculum, developing and implementing an engaging, innovative, and rigorous curriculum that prepares our students; instruction, to identify and implement research-based instructional practices across our division; and to also provide ongoing professional learning for our adults to support those particular efforts; and also to create a balanced assessment system that accurately measures student progress and growth. Our second goal area is high-quality professionals. It is one of our priorities to be directed by highly qualified professionals. And in this particular goal area, the team felt it's important to make sure that we are recruiting, retaining, and offering professional development and professional learning opportunities for those high-quality professionals, licensed, classified, and all areas. The third area is safe and innovative learning environment, and that's a little bit of a different title than we had in the last plan, but it is our priority to provide a safe, supportive, and innovative learning environment for all students. That includes providing a safe and supportive learning environment for all stakeholders, adults and community members included, collaborating with the school community to create innovative learning environments that will support our learners in a variety of ways, maintaining a positive social and emotional climate for our students and staff. And that is an important nod to our PBIS initiatives and our partnerships with local counseling, and then also technology, to make sure that our innovative technologies are accessible to all students and staff members across the division. And our last goal area is family and community engagement. It is our priority to engage families and the community to ensure ongoing, open communication and opportunities for student growth. We know that that means constant innovation and revising of practice and communication because of technology and because of social media. So we want to make sure that we are fostering active and positive communication among our students, staff, families, and the community, to make sure that all stakeholders are engaged and feel well-informed. We also want to build capacity and create tools to foster partnerships within our school community, to make sure that we are all working together again for that common goal, putting our students first and making sure they're successful. Again, you have in front of you a printed document, which is our plan on a page. This would be the plan that we could hand to people when they ask us what we're all about. Again, designed by our students, but this is Inspire 2025. As you know, when we go into the full document, we'll have measures so that we can assess ourselves as we go annually, and we can provide that information to you all and to our community to let them know how we think we're doing and what our data says as far as how we're doing. You will notice that when you see those measures in the future, that they are much more focused on student instruction rather than on a wide variety of areas, because that is our priority. And we feel that if all of these other goal areas are doing their job correctly, that our instruction measures will reflect that. So you'll see that... So you'll see that when we move forward in the plan, moving into the fall. At this point, I'd like to ask if you all have any feedback or suggestions.
Well, I think, I think we can see from the original implementation of strategic plan back several years ago, and look at where our school system is now, that this plan, the whole process of the strategic plan and addressing it annually has been instrumental, I think, in the improvements that have occurred in Henry County Public Schools. And I'm glad to see that we're going forward with this particular program. I've worked in schools many years when we did all these plans and then filed them in a filing cabinet somewhere and didn't look at them until the new one was due. And it's nice to see that, that we have something that serves as a guide for our school system to continually improve. Other questions or comments?
Well, I certainly don't have any suggestions how you could possibly improve this. I'll be honest. I think the committee has done an excellent job.
Thank you.
But I'd just like to add that I like the format. I guess, if you will, user-friendly. You know, as far as the language is concerned, addressing those concerns, that will take us to, if you will, the next level, you know, where we are. So I'll go back through it, though.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work and effort and presentation, Ms. Hatchett. We have dispensed with the consent agenda, so we'll move on to item six, the action agenda for today's meeting, the personal appointment of school board members to serve on the Piedmont Governor's School Board. Dr. Cotton.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For this past year, Mr. Francis Sayer did a great job of serving as the Piedmont Governor's School Board Member as well as the Chair, and Mrs. Flanagan was the alternate. I'm recommending today that the board nominate and select one school board member to be appointed to serve on the Piedmont Governor's School Governing Board and one member to serve as the alternate. And that term, it's a three-year term from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, it's been my honor and privilege to serve the last three years. It'd be an honor to serve another three years, but I think this should be rotated like the chairmanship and vice-chairmanship and this director on the governor's board. I've already asked, I thought, well, if you're interested, you said no. Reverend Ockley, you have seen already, Mrs. Flanagan has been out of the four and she was my alternate. And I think I missed one meeting in three years and she was very responsible and she was there to take my place. Mrs. Flanagan, are you interested in another four-year term or a three-year term?
I will be armed to do that, but ultimately the one is final.
Right. Well, Mr. Martin, you're next in senior R.D.
I would be interested in... It's at the college, so I'm down the hall from him.
Right. And I'm sure, Mr. Grably, you'd be willing to serve too. So I bet laws, all three of you are highly qualified, so I'll leave that up to the rest of the board.
Does someone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Grably as the representative from this board.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor of the stated motion, signify by raising your right hand.
I vote.
Did your daughter attend the governor's school at one time?
She did, yes.
Okay, then the floor is now open for a motion regarding the alternate individual.
Ms. Flanagan?
Both of them are qualified, obviously.
Ms. Flanagan.
Well, I motion that Ms. Flanagan, since she's been there to serve as an alternate.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Those in favor of these stated, this stated motion, signify by raising your right hand. Congratulations to Mr. Grably and Ms. Flanagan. Okay, we'll move to item two, authorization of signatures in the absence of the superintendent. Dr. Cotton?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Virginia Department of Ed requires that annually we select someone to sign off on documents in the absence of the superintendent. And in this case, I have recommended Lisa Milner in the past because of the Virginia Department of Education reports that she has access to, and I would like to make the same recommendation this year.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second that Ms. Milner be authorized to sign in the absence of the superintendent. The, for the discussion, those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Item C, renewal of property casualty and workers' compensation insurance for the following year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been working with Dr. Beckner on this renewal. This is something we do every year, property casualty and workers' compensation insurance. You'll notice in the fact sheet that there's some information about why there is a slight increase. One in particular is to include Metaview in the plan, but also there's an increase in the coverage we're offering to our middle school students that I think is a good idea in case we have to deal with any injuries and so forth. So I recommend that the board approve this for the upcoming year.
Is there a motion to approve Dr. Cotton's request regarding this? Questions before the motion, if you have any ones that he can answer specifically?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we renew of the property casualty and workers' compensation insurance for 2018-19.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions? Those in favor of this stated motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Section D, request to transfer FY 2018 operated and budget funds. Dr. Cotton, your hand.
Yes, sir. We do have, with this being the end of the year, we are working on year-end spending. And again, as I've been working with Dr. Beckner on plans for the end of the year, what we've discovered is that it would be advantageous for us to make some adjustments within the categories. And you know, that does require board action as well from both boards, as well as approval from the board of supervisors. We're hoping to move some funds into two particular categories, transportation and facilities, so that we can take care of some year-end expenditures. And I know you're aware of some of those things that we're working on, additional buses as well as other potential items that we're trying to resolve at year-end. So it would be advantageous for us to make these adjustments.
Move or approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to accept this request regarding transfer. We all understand that we have to do this before it can be presented, I think, to the governing board for their final approval. Those in favor of this stated motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Section E, adjustment to funding sources for two items approved at the May 3 regular school board meeting. Dr. Cotton?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This, the board has already approved these purchases, but what we've discovered is the board approved for different funding sources to take care of these purchases. One example in particular, we were going to use the textbook budget to pay for all of our textbook replacement with our, and our new textbooks, with a new adoption. What we've discovered is we could use some of our year-end funds to pay some of that cost, which means we can leave some funds in our textbook account, which is a good idea because that will gather interest, you know, over the, you know, because you can hold that over from year to year. So what we're asking is not that you necessarily approve the purchases because you already have, we're just asking you approve the change in the funding source so that we can optimize our year-end spending.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve these two items.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the request. Those in favor of stated motion, signify by raising your right hand. Item F, approval of the Code of Student Conduct for 2018-19 school year. Mr. Scott?
Good morning, Dr. Devault and members of the board. In May, I presented to you the, for first reading, the revisions to the Code of Student Conduct. And in the last month, I've taken feedback from principals and other administrators and from our school board attorneys and have made necessary revisions, which amounted to, a few careful readers found an S that I had lost in one of the pages. And, but other than that, I think that it remained virtually unchanged since the last time. So with, with your approval today, we will begin to put that up on the website and start to enforce it when school starts. Do you have any questions about, about anything that, from the previous time?
I did, had noted a question. How does the recent General Assembly and Governor signature on the bill regarding expulsion suspensions, are we in compliance?
Yes, sir, we are. And that's something that we'll be addressing at the administrative retreat. But we're already pretty well in compliance with that as far as the K-3 suspensions and the cap on those. But that'll be a point of discussion and training throughout the summer.
Okay. Do we have a motion or other questions for Mr. Scott before we take action?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Code of Conduct as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Hearing no additional questions or comments, those in favor of this motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Item G, approval of 2018-19 Title I, Part A, Improving Basic Programs Grant Application. Ms. Durham.
Good morning, Dr. Devault and members of the board. Henry County Public Schools this year is eligible for an estimated amount of about $2.6 million in Title I, Part A funding. The amount is pending upon approval of the application from the VDOE. The funds are used to support elementary instructional programs and it's projected that all of our elementary schools will be Title I and qualified for this programming. You'll see in the bullet points there, most of our budget is tied up with salaries for reading specialists, instructional paraprofessionals, instructional coaches. We're also including this year, high-scope training for our preschool teachers, BPI and ECSE teachers and assistants. And we're going to, when we train them, we'll pay for some substitutes. We're also including some STEM activities, certain materials and supplies that the schools have requested and asked for. We are required by the State Department to use part of the funding for parental involvement and professional development, and we're also using it with some technology. Also pending approval, you'll see at the bottom, we are planning to purchase these items at the bottom that are over $20,000 and have sole-source vendors. These are normal purchases on here. We normally buy our handwriting paper, scholastic news, SOL coach materials, Learning A to Z. We do have high-scope training on there for our BPI and ECSE teachers, which is a new addition to the Title I grant, along with some Lucy Calkins. I think you guys remember the Lucy Calkins Writing Program that you approved for us to provide professional development on. Well, we have to buy some instructional materials for that. And IRE Program, that's a normal program that we buy with Title I. It is recommended that the school board approve the 2018-19 Title I, Part A grant application and the purchase of the materials and the supplies listed above. It's a fiscal impact of $2.6 million. It's 100% grant-funded, all comes from the federal grant from Title I.
Questions regarding this? I had a, it stored the Lucy Calkins thing there. If I understand, that's something, I know that we've had some problems with our writing scores. Is this something that's going to maybe address some areas there?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, this is going to be some hands-on coaching. And we piloted this year with Samuel Elementary and saw a great increase in the writing of those students in K-5. And so we're moving it into the rest of our elementary schools in hopes that we can help those middle school scores in eighth grade. And it's integrating writing and reading, it's something that we really need. Our teachers are excited about it, our instructional coaches, reading specialists. Mrs. Motley at Samuel saw great improvement with writing on that, so.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you know the state no longer requires a fifth-grade writing test, but our concern has been that writing still needs to be a priority, K-5. So this is our effort to make sure our teachers know how to teach writing and to make sure that our students are developing those skills long before they get to middle school.
Other questions?
This is 100% grant-funded, I assume we get it every year, right?
Yes, sir, this is Title I, every year.
Yeah, Title I, so no...
Yes, we have no out-of-pocket expenditures for this, it's all Title I.
Your predecessor loved pointing that out.
Yeah, sounds, you must be living up to the legacy, Mr. Grably.
Long as we know the grant is going to be there, that's okay.
Is there a motion to approve this request?
So moved.
Second.
Another discussion? Those in favor of stated motions, signify by raising your right hand. I move to item H, approval to purchase math instruction and assessment resources. Ms. Durham, again?
Yes, Durham. We use flexible creativity and they develop these instructional assessment resources. These are resources that we have used in the past, we currently use them. This is an upgrade or update to match the new Math 2016 standards. You know, our standards changed and we're implementing the new 2000 Math 16 standards. These materials will be updated to match that. And our teachers do use these materials, they're online resources where they can use daily math minutes, they can use, there's some checkpoint tests and assessments that they can use. There's also some authentic assessment workbooks that they use where they'll use sort of like project-based learning math problems. And these are resources that our teachers do need and they do use, and they're just an update to match our new standards. It's recommended that the school board approve the purchase of the updated math instructional assessment resources from flexible creativity for 2018-19. 16,331 of it will come from the FY 2017 Title I budget. $21,450 will come from the local spend-down budget, for a total of $37,781.
We have a motion for approval of Ms. Durham's request for elementary instruction materials.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no additional questions or discussion, those in favor of this stated motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We move to item I, approval to award RFP for instructional coaches for the following year. Ms. Milner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Henry County Public Schools has used instructional coaches and consultants to provide training, mentoring and coaching in best practices to improve instruction. We've used this throughout the years. And as part of the program, the consultants provide individual instructional coaching for teachers in implementing differentiation as well as best practices. Our coaches work with teachers as well as administrators and provide reports to the schools and to the divisions on how we're doing with their coaching. And it is recommended that the board approve multiple vendors for instructional coaches for the 2018-2019 school year and that the division be authorized to exercise subsequent renewals in accordance with terms of the contract. As you can see, we have a list of vendors that, we may not use all of them, however, we would like the flexibility to be able to use if necessary, if needed. The fiscal impact is $286,425 estimated. We plan to use our fiscal year 2019 budget as well as pending harvest funds, which are 100% reimbursable, as well as Title I, Part A, which Ms. Durham already mentioned, is 100% reimbursable and possible local purchase services.
Questions regarding this request? I think everyone's familiar with instructional coaches. Each, each elementary school has one of those that works with teachers to provide additional instructional support.
Mr. Chairman, that's something different. This is, that's out of local, but these coaches are consultants, is a better term to use. These are folks that come in and work with our instructional coaches in the buildings as well as our teachers.
Such as the Lucy Calkins that Mrs., excuse me, Ms. Durham just mentioned, we would need the instructional coach to come in and provide that training. These will be one of those trainers.
Okay.
I know some of them, some I don't. And I know we don't have to go through the whole list, but, all right, I know, okay, Hurston Educational Consultant, what do, what do they do?
Well, they provide consulting in different areas, differentiation. She has a list of different areas that she focuses on. All of them focus on different things. And I don't have the list in front of me. And I don't have the list in front of me, and our team worked. And what we did is because we had such a variety of services that various ones could provide, that's the reason why we chose to approve all of them.
The reason that we have to bring this forward is because if any one of these consultants goes over a certain amount during the course of the year, even though they don't go over that amount, you know, at individual times during the year, if you look at the whole year and they go over twenty thousand dollars, we wanted to make sure that the board was able to approve that in case that were to happen. And my other understanding is that you all may or may not use some of these folks. But you just wanted to have prior approval to use them throughout the year.
And Mr. Graham, I could provide you that information after.
I'm just curious as to what services they're going to provide, you know, if that's going to be, but I know the consultant.
Right, some of it is writing, some of it is, again, the math consulting. Like Dan Mulligan, when he came, when he comes and provides that professional development. Our preschool professional development with the high scope, various ones with the differentiation, different ones have their different specialty.
Yeah, Simply Achieve is writing support that we're working on, right, with middle, middle school. So what's challenging is the name of the consultant isn't, that's probably what you're thinking of, because the consultant is not in the name of their consulting business. So that's what, let's probably throw.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I know, like, from K has.
We have, do we have a motion regarding this request?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the request as presented. Those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Move to item J, approval to purchase installation of network cabling for wireless. Ms. Atkins?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Continuing with the infrastructure upgrade, network wiring is required as a replacement of old fiber optic cables and for installation of wireless access points. At Central Office, the elementary and secondary schools, Career Academy and Center for Community Learning. It is recommended that the school board approve the purchase of installation of network cabling for wireless LAN from Gamewood Incorporated, who last year won the bid and we continued with the same bid for this year. Up to seventy thousand dollars from fiscal year two thousand nineteen Technology Reimbursable State Budget or the A D P Equipment Budget.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Is there any questions for Ms. Atkins? If not, those in favor of this stated motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Approval to purchase cases for new first and fifth grade iPads, Ms. Atkins again?
As you know, we're purchasing additional iPads for first and fifth grade. So continuing with our I T sustainability and replacement cycle, the school year, this school year, the division is replacing the fifth grade iPads and replacing, purchasing iPads for first grade students. This iPad requires a new case for the device. The cases that we wish to standardize on are the same we used last year from the company Rug Ed. These cases are very sturdy and support the iPad as it travels home in a bookbag. The new case includes a cover in addition to a three-year zero deductible repair warranty. Rug Ed will also repair the screen if it is damaged inside the case. It is recommended that the school board approve the purchase of one thousand one hundred and forty iPad cases at seventy dollars each from Rug Ed, who is a sole source for the Rug Ed case. This is a fiscal impact of eighty thousand dollars from the two thousand nineteen budget or F Y two thousand eighteen pending year-end funds. And this is that same case that Tayway demonstrated. We've had very good luck, the ones that have been, iPads that have broken this year, Rug Ed Company has replaced the iPad or repaired the iPad at no charge to us.
So part of this may come from carryover funds.
If available, yes, sir.
Yeah. Is there a motion regarding this request?
So moved. Second.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, those in favor of this request signify by raising your right hand. Kind of moves to item A, approval to purchase Class Link. Ms. Atkins, you're spending all of our money here.
Henry County Public Schools uses a variety of websites and applications vital to the success of our district. In an effort to provide efficiency and to streamline access to all of these resources, a single sign-on platform was determined to be the solution. Class Link delivers instant access to all resources on all devices. Content will be divided into category, categories so that students only see what is relevant to them. Students will sign in one time and have access to all their content. Teachers, administrators and parents will have the same single sign-on access to their content. It is recommended that the school board approve the purchase of Class Link, a sole sourced, single sign-on software, with a fiscal impact of twenty-seven thousand three hundred and ten dollars from fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget pending available funds or two thousand nineteen Technology Purchase Services.
And school board members, just so you know what a single sign-on is, I mean, literally the teachers log in one time to the network and they can get to any application without having to remember fifteen different passwords. So this is going to be a game changer for us as far as using technology and the students will be able to use the same where they don't have to remember all these logins. I know all of us have many logins that we try to remember, but they won't have to do that anymore. They just have to remember the one.
And that's when we log into our website, Henry County, they just?
When they actually log on to their, their email, right?
Yes, sir, I think it will start with our sign-on onto the Henry County page. And, and that will open up any other thing that you want to get to. So if you want to go to the board docs, you won't have to sign in again because you've signed in that first time. Or if you want to check your email, you won't have to sign in again. So if you have different passwords for different applications. And you can create your own bookmark. So, you know, we'll set you up the ones that we know you need for Henry County Public Schools. But then if you have other bookmarks that you want to keep on there, you can set that up yourself. So when the screen opens, it just looks like little boxes with the name of whatever site you're going to. And you just click on that box and it opens up without having to sign in again.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this request as presented.
Second.
Have a move and second to approve this request as presented. Those in favor of stated motions signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Atkins. We're move, move now to annual review of our crisis plan. Mr. Scott?
Good morning, members, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In accordance with the Code of Virginia, twenty-two point one dash two seventy-nine point eight, local school boards are required to annually review the written school crisis emergency management and medical emergency response plans for each of the schools and division. Then the superintendent is to certify that this review is taking place by, by August thirty-first of each year to the Virginia Center for School Safety. Revisions were made to the manual this year, and I think you've received a copy for your review. And kind of a little background, the way we did that is we split it up into sections. Our safety committee split off into groups like myself and Ms. Riddler reviewed a section, Mr. Scott and law enforcement reviewed the sections and so forth. And so we made some minor changes to our program this year. That included some things that we're working with the I T group to make sure that the forms that the principals use will be readily available to them through the Power School Learning Administrative Resources Group that they use. We've got an update to our incident notification protocol. We revised our threat assessment forms. Revised reunification plan, which may include some, some things through our sites, changing in the sites. And then we revised the notification letter to parents to inform of crisis and safety procedures, including the Spanish version. And again, some of these changes come out of, as Dr. Cotton has mentioned in the past, whenever we have an incident of some sort in our division, we do a debrief with everybody at the table. And some of these changes came out of the debriefs as we move forward. So these changes will be presented to administrative retreat and then each, each school would receive a copy prior to school beginning. So it's recommended that the board declare the required crisis plan review complete.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I know we did provide copies for you through the secure area and board grant because obviously this is not public information. Certainly, if the board feels comfortable approving today, that would be great. If not, we can certainly approve it at the next meeting, depending on what you all would like to do.
So is there a motion from the board?
I see no need to hesitate. Just the review was, do we approve as presented?
Okay, it's been moved in second. Based on what Mr. Scott has said, it appears that all of the, all of the pertinent groups that need to have been made aware of this have been, that has been done.
Yes, sir. Mind us presenting the changes to the principals, which that'll be done during administrative retreat.
Okay.
If, so if there, if there are additional changes, can we make, if we approve this, can we make those changes and you? And I say that because I have a question concerning item R when we get to it that may affect this.
Uh-oh.
So.
I guess if we wanted to update it, that could be done if, if information surfaces at a later date that something has not been included or addressed in a way that we would hope.
Yes, sir. Now, the way we've done some of that in the past, let's take, let's take our incident notification protocol. If a person has left that particular role or is not in that role any longer, we update that incident notification protocol and get that out to the principals to replace in their crisis manuals throughout the school year. So those type changes do take place from time to time. This is to all encompass after we reviewed everything for the year, so.
Yeah, we, we make changes throughout the year. But we do have to do an annual review to meet this requirement. But if we, if we go through a, a crisis and we need to make changes, we make them.
You feel okay with that, Mr. Graham? Okay, we do have a motion in second, I believe, already? We did it, right? Those in favor of stated motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Item E, adjustments to funding amount for contract awarded at April twelfth, school board meeting from Metta View. Again, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. As we continue with ordering new furniture and associated equipment from Metta View, we found it necessary to increase our original not to exceed amount from the April school board meeting when you had originally approved from the R F P and the not to, not to exceed amount. We're asking to increase that to a hundred, a hundred thousand more dollars. And so that basically would be that, we already know Barrows and Bassett Off Supply currently provides, holds a contract with us and they would, we would reach out to them for the remaining pieces of furniture with it. But we're asking that, that you give us approval to increase the original not to exceed amount by a hundred thousand dollars in order to purchase some additional furniture and equipment from Metta View.
Mr. Scott, we're still within budget, correct?
We are, the total of the school of construction and everything together is within budget still, yes, sir. The estimated, the original estimate, estimated amount of furniture has gone over a little bit. But as I mentioned in April, the technology piece was under a little bit, so we're pretty close to a wash there, so.
Okay, questions or comments on this request? Is there a motion regarding Mr. Scott's request? We need a motion to go for, if you have questions, now's the time to ask them.
So we, for the budget, we, we okay?
We're okay as a total project, yes, sir.
Total project, right.
Where we are, we won't have to ask for any more. If nothing happens this week, we won't have to ask for anything else dealing with Metta View. And as you, as you see, some of these fund, the way the funding is done, we may pitch in some of this funding out of our operations and maintenance budget this year and then some of it coming out of the Metta View account, what's left over as well.
What's the reason you anticipate that the furniture is larger than originally estimated?
Well, I guess the pricing of furniture as a whole, if you, if you're reaching out to the different furniture companies on them, they're continually seeing price increases that goes along with it. And, and it seems to be all the furniture companies and manufacturers have now jumped on board with this, the new learning environment, if you will. So all their pricing are kind of getting pretty close to the same. And, and so we're, we're seeing some things with our cafeteria pieces of it, media center additions. All the classroom furniture has already been ordered, and as a matter of fact, some of it starts arriving next Thursday. But this, basically, this addition has to do with additional equipment that goes in the school plus media center furniture and some cafeteria furniture that's in there.
I'll make a motion to approve as recommended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second to approve this request as explained by, by Mr. Scott. Those in favor of this motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. And Mr. Scott, you have the next item, also approve or award of a contract for paving projects?
Yes, sir. The pavement at Rich Akers Elementary and Axton Elementary is in need of replacement or slash repair. Sometimes we can do an overlay versus digging it all up, along with areas in the car rider loops at Philadel Collins Middle School and Bassett High School. Henry County, the county of Henry, currently holds a contract with C J Asphalt of Boons Mill, Virginia, from a bid that they had originally initiated, which will allow us to piggyback for the pricing. So after discussions with the firm, they have provided a quote in the amount of two hundred sixty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars to provide paving work at the above mentioned locations. So it's recommended that we award a contract to C J Asphalt of Boons Mill, Virginia, in the amount of two hundred sixty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars for various paving projects. Now, this is all pending availability of funds and piggybacking off of the existing contract. So we may, if I've shared this information with Dr. Beckner, we may be able to capture some of these sites, but maybe not all of them again, depending on the funding that we have for year end.
And Mr. Chairman, these, two of these projects, Rich Akers and Axton, you know, we've been trying to do both of those for the last several years. We just haven't had the funds to do so. So they've been on our priority list for several years.
Right, as part of our capital improvement plan, yes, sir.
Mr. Scott, I did some research on this piggyback. I've been interested in piggybacks lately. And I'm going to tell you what I found out and then you can tell me whether I'm right or wrong. I checked with some county officials and my understanding is that there was a competitive bid, R F P here recently and they're doing some work presently at the J C project, you guys?
They are, yes, sir.
Okay, and we have several local paving companies. I mean, I don't consider Boons Mill local, but they're in the neighborhood. But the research I found out, it was a competitive bid and Boons Mill beat these other people bad. So this piggyback would be good for the taxpayers of Henry County, would save us some money, this piggyback here.
Yes, sir, that's, that's what happens. And typically, whenever we look into that, I'll reach out to Mr. Moore, of course, in purchasing, and we look at how their bids were done and get that information from him as well. So this is, could be a good, good fit for us and we're saving, time-saving too, so.
There, there are maybe sometimes our piggybacks might not be a good idea, but this one here is a good one right here. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we prove this as Mr. Scott presented. Second.
Any additional discussion on this?
I'm supportive. I'm just going to say that as the representative for the Reed Creek District, I've heard quite a bit about car rider loops at Philadel Collins and Bassett High School, so I'm, I'm excited about the possibility of that being rectified.
But as a comment, provided funding priorities, I would assume would be Rich Akers and Axton, since that's been on the list, right? Would that be first priority?
Yes, sir, they are first priority. These are the, the Bassett and the, and the F C are some repair work. And then extending the car rider loop preparing for a horticulture program at Bassett High School. But, but those can be captured as we're moving into the next fiscal year if we don't run out of funding on that.
And that's around the back of Bassett, right?
It is actually to the side. It's two, two locations. One's in the back and one's to the right side where the, where the car rider loop has to reroute it, if you will.
Right, okay.
Yeah, they'll gladly take you out there and show you.
Okay, we have, we do have a motion on the floor. Those in favor of this motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Move to item P, approval to award a contract for playground equipment at Metta View Elementary School.
Yes, sir. As we mentioned beforehand, to kind of wait until, get all the construction and the furniture and stuff arrived. But playground equipment is essential for our students and the schools. And with new playground areas at Metta View, a committee was put together and explored best solutions to these areas. And as a committee, we've decided that we can move some of our existing equipment from the Collinsville primary area over there and then purchase some new as well. Playground specialties incorporated. Playground Specialties Incorporated has provided a quote for new equipment in the special education and pre-K playground area, as well as one piece of new equipment in the K through five playground area. And it's estimated an amount of fifty-eight thousand dollars and we would use the NJPA, the National Joint Powers Alliance Person Cooperative, in order to purchase this equipment from Playground Specialties. And so it's recommended that we award this contract to Playground Specialties and the amount mentioned and split it up, this, this cost would be split up between the PTO at Collinsville Primary and John Redd combined and then amount coming from our operations and maintenance budget as broken out in fiscal impact, as you see.
Questions regarding playground equipment purchase? If not, is there a motion to approve this request as, as made?
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been made in second. There are no additional comments, those in favor of this stated motion signify by raising your right hand. Can we move to item Q, approval for award a contract to purchase maintenance vehicles, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir, I'm sure you're getting tired of me being up here, so I'll make this brief. The facilities and maintenance departments that need to replace and/or add four cargo service vans and support utility vehicle and this is all part of our ten-year maintenance vehicle replacement plan. These vehicles are used for day-to-day operation, providing maintenance needs throughout our division. Commonwealth of Virginia has a state contract for purchasing new and used vehicles and using the state contract, we retired, obtained a quote from RK Chevrolet, Virginia Beach, Virginia in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars. And so it's recommended that we purchase four cargo vans, one pickup truck to replace and/or add to our fleet in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars from RK Chevrolet of Virginia Beach. And of course, this is pending availability of funds as well.
Now, Mr. Scott, it's all right, it's my impression that we have to go down there and pick those vehicles up and bring them back here.
They will deliver, but they charge that piece on it, so it's a little cheaper for us to go get them.
This is for us to go down there and get them.
Yes, sir, it does, yes, sir. I think Mr. Beasley carries a crew with him and they go down there and pick it up.
Now, I would like sometime, I'd like the staff to give me an idea of what it costs for our labor and our gas to go down there and then bring those vehicles back here. The warranty doesn't start until a vehicle is delivered, when you buy it and have it, have it delivered to the locality. And it's full of gas when you, when you get it. So by the time we add all these expenses up, I think maybe our local dealerships, we've got a GR Chevrolet. I think by the time you add all those extra expense up, because we buy from them, it's gonna be delivered right here, full of gas. I think that we could save money, I mean, it needs to be looked at.
Yeah, we can do a comparison, I'll do a comparison for you. And I can give you an idea that, that, that labor cost and the, the gas cost.
Yeah, I understand, Mr. Tatum buys a safety vehicle, it is delivered right here at Kings Mountain Road, full of gas and the warranty doesn't start until it gets here. It's got a thousand miles on it, first thousand doesn't count the warranty. I think that needs to be looked at, I would like to do everything I can to help our local dealerships.
Yeah, we'll certainly take a look at it. I know in the past, we've looked at those and, you know, the state, of course, they send out their bids on a regular basis looking for dealerships to apply to that, it's my understanding.
Now, this is from a state bid, correct?
This is from a state bid.
So, so obviously any local dealers could be a part, be added to that list.
Yeah, but we're not comparing apples to apples, local dealerships is gonna be delivered here and we're gonna save all of them. I'd just like to get an idea of what the expense is.
Yeah, I'd be glad to, I'd be glad to create a comparison, I'll share it with Dr. Cotton, sure.
And I'll make a motion that we approve this as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? And Mr. Scott, if you will make a note to follow up on Mr. Xavier's request.
Absolutely.
All those in favor of the stated motion signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, Mr. Scott. We now move to the final item on the action agenda, approval of to purchase replacement radio communication system for transportation. Ms. Whitlow, you have a presentation regarding this request?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna present the RFP. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I don't know if it's still morning or not, could be afternoon, I don't know. I'm here to ask for approval to purchase replacement radio communication systems for the Transportation Department. Henry County Public Schools solicitor requests for proposal for purchasing a radio communication system. The Transportation Department utilizes a two-way radio system to communicate with buses and schools on a daily basis. This is an analog system, which has been in place for several years. The system's components consist of mobile units in the buses and vehicles, base stations at the garage and the schools, a repeater at the Ferndale Radio Tower. The repeater will no longer be supported by the manufacturer at the end of 2018. If the repeater fails, there would be no communication with the buses. For safety reasons, it is recommended to go with a digital system with GPS tracking. There were four firms that responded. Telephonic interviews were conducted and a decision has been based on attached interview questions and the following. Number of years in business, the price, projected timeframe of completion, number of customers served and number of similar projects completed. After the interviews, one vendor stood out from the rest. The firm Mobile Communications USA best met all specifications and goals of Henry County Schools. It is recommended that Mobile Communications be awarded the contract for the replacement radio system. Subject to availability of year-ending funds, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, eight hundred and eighty-six funds will be needed for this completion.
Okay, do we have questions or comments of, of Ms. Whitlow?
Yes, Mrs. Whitlow, I, I was there when the RFPs were open and I was told, I was the only school board member that's ever done it, that it was perfectly illegal for any school board employee to be there. Now, I looked at the RFP for Mobile Communications, I, I, I'm quoting from the RFP that Mobile Communications wrote. They said one control station is to be mounted at the 911 center. We suggest you contact the service provider for the 911 center for the antenna system and insulation at that particular site. Have, have the county staff contacted the 911 center vendor to see what needs to be done and what that might cost?
Not at this time, we are looking to get the communication system on the buses and working and then make contact with 911. That, yet they own their own radio system, so we would need to tie into that if that's the route we decide to go. First communication for buses, though, is to contact the bus garage office where we're located and we then take over the communication with the bus drivers. And if 911 is needed at this time, we do make contact with dispatch.
Right, but I mean, that expense, the school board's gonna have to pay that expense, whatever that, we need to find out what that expense is, does it, the local company got it? They would pay for it, it would save us, so the, the final, the final figures you have here are not really accurate. It could cost ten to twenty thousand, depending on what, what the recommendations are.
The figures that we have are stating what we need, what we, Mr. Beasley and Mr. McCulloch and myself spent hours on looking, so we wrote the RFP with specifics of what we found that was needed at this time.
So you don't know what's gonna cost, the 911 center vendor is owned by GCS Electronics, they own it and so we're gonna have to, if they don't get the contract, we're gonna have to pay to hook on to the system, and we need to find out what that figure is.
If that is needed, then we would have to contact that now, but that's not necessarily needed for us. Our first communication is through the bus garage and we will be tracking the buses.
Right. Now, just to give a little background of what's happened, because some officials have asked what my involvement has been in this, even whether my involvement has been appropriate, and I feel that I need to set the record straight. I want to be perfectly clear what, what I, my involvement's been. Last month, this was on the agenda for, as a piggyback, and the same company was gonna get it. And I looked at it and nobody, on the piggyback, nobody else had a chance to bid on it. And these other people have been involved over the last couple of years discussing this. And so I, I took the specs and gave it to a local company and said, is this a good deal for the taxpayers of Henry County? And very quickly, they said, no, we could do this at least sixty thousand dollars cheaper on a three hundred thousand dollar contract. And so I went to Dr. Cotton and I said, nobody else had a chance to bid on it and we could save sixty thousand dollars, what they're saying, I don't agree with it and I can't support it. Give Dr. Cotton credit, he took it off the agenda. And we did a new RFP. The last month's specs were about three pages, this month's specs were thirty, almost forty pages long. And I looked at it and it looked like Greek and Hebrew to me. And I asked some questions and I found out that Motorola wrote the specs, they wrote the specs. And I don't think that's fair. Now, Mr. Giles right there, Mr. Giles Smith, his company is Kenwood, they're both top-notch companies. If Kenwood would have wrote the specs, that wouldn't be fair either. And so I think it needs to be put off neutral, is what I think.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm not gonna vote to give it to anybody.
I would like at this time to ask Chris McCulloch, he's employed by the county of Henry as the radio technician.
Right.
Yeah, just to clear up, Motorola did not write the specs. Motorola is a radio manufacturer. I wrote the specs to, for the RFP.
Well, there's a lot of other people that told me differently.
Wow, they're, they're wrong too.
Right, well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions to come before we begin to move on this request?
All right, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on, really with the GPS and the, a question was raised about the 911. My concern is safety.
Yes, sir.
If something happens on that bus, will we be able to track that bus and get emergency people at the site in a timely manner? That's, that's what I'm concerned about, you know?
Yes, sir, we will be tracking those buses. Sherry Vestal, which is our nurse here at Henry County Public Schools, has a radio that she has a base that she uses as well. A lot of times at this point, when we do have, right now the severity has been maybe a severe nosebleed. Ms. Vestal listens to the radio, it's there on her desk, she travels with it in the mornings. If it's six-thirty in the morning and this happens, she will also chime in on the radio and the nurses are immediately sent out, we contact dispatch and emergency, emergency personnel are there as quickly as we can get them. Safety is the biggest issue. Transportation needs to be moved to a whole nother level as far as safety and that's what we're working to do. For example, we had a student at Law Park Middle School calling 911 from one of the buses and the student ended up taking his battery out of his cell phone and 911 dispatch called us and said, you know, we can't track the bus. And so there without GPS, we're looking to figure out where the bus is. The only radio communication we had is one base called to the bus driver. He had to pull over on the side of the road, but still, if he could only tell me that he was at Chestnut Knob, that still gives me a wide variety. So, you know, I'm, I was really shocked when I moved, when I moved to the Transportation Department and realized that we did not have, and we're one of the few school divisions that do not have GPS as far as Region Six. And along with student safety, it's safety in general from the office standpoint and the bus drivers. The bus drivers are who I'm responsible for, along with the children. And I want to make sure that they are as safe as possible out there. And until you have sat in the chair and you're responsible for them, you don't understand transportation. Transportation, it goes deeper than anything I ever experienced as a principal for Henry County. And what I'm working for is to close that disconnect and make transportation, my drivers as, as well as the students, as safe as possible. Without GPS right now, I can give you another example. If a parent calls in in the morning and says, has the bus came to 530 Beaver Ridge Road yet? Well, I make base to bus 10. Bus 10 would then have to answer, they'd get us on the first call. Then I have to say, bus 10, have you been by 530 Beaver Ridge Road yet? He will reply, yes, ma'am. I get back on the phone with the parent, yes, ma'am, he has been by. Their next question is, well, I've been out there for fifteen minutes, what time did he come by? Base to bus 10, what time did you approach 530 Beaver Ridge Road? Then he has to say, seven-twenty-two this morning. So then I get back on the phone with, with the parent and say, it was seven-twenty-two this morning. And then it's like the argument, no, they didn't, then I have the driver saying, yes. If I have GPS, I will be able to track exactly where that bus has been that morning and what time they stopped. If they stopped to idle, if they opened the door, like I would be able to know everything about that bus. If, if a bus is taken off route, I will be able to know, have been alarmed set on my GPS system, I will know if that bus is off the route.
Well, that's one of the things that, now I can say about one of my neighbors, I can honest to say that they did a very good job with providing GPS to our bus, I dealt with buses and. So will you, will the principals have the software on their computers to track the buses as well?
The principals will not have the software to track this time.
Okay, okay.
But anybody that wants it can, can have it.
Right.
What did not, I mean, you talk about the safety of the students and so forth, and I appreciate that. Because I think that's what we're all about, is for the safety of the students as well. My greatest concern, however, is that even though you have the GPS system on the buses, would it not be smart to hook up to the 911 center while you're doing this? It seems to me like you're putting a cart before the horse and when you're doing that, you're not covering all of your angles, you're only covering a few. Maybe in this RFP, we should have looked at that and we should have seen whether or not that would be the most feasible way of putting this radio system in. I'm not sure that the RFP really addresses what we actually need. I think it addresses part of it, but I don't think it addresses all of it. And it concerns me greatly, it really does.
Do the, the committee, was the committee that went through this whole project, was that an issue with them or was it ever brought up or mentioned?
Mr. Chairman, we have the members of the committee here, as well as David Moore from Purchasing. And again, these are the professionals who know what they need and, and ask for it. So if any of you all would like to speak to, to the needs and, and what's being addressed, I think we need to leave it to the professionals.
I'm Charles Beasley, I'm head of the shop. A couple of things I'd like to address. We've heard Mr. Giles talk about the connection to 911, could be an expense later on, right? As Mr. Smith is really concerned with the safety of Henry County Schools. What we have put out has all the capabilities of hooking in to 911. If he's really concerned, then he will keep calling down. It's how much he's concerned for the children of Henry County, what we can tell him. Also, we have a limited time in which we can install the radios. It has to be either done, sometimes we have all the buses off the road. It can be done during the year on campus, we end up with two systems on these buses trying to communicate. Can you imagine trying to communicate with two different radios? It, it may be virtually impossible for us to have effective communication in the schools. Before, when we present, was going to present this toward the board, we was trying to do this in a timeframe in which we could get it all done, this summer and have it all implemented up and running by the first school. Right now, we are pushing that timeframe to the limit. And I just want, you know, we're talking about safety, I'm talking about safety. I'm trying to get this done within this timeframe.
But again, but again, you do, you did your due diligence as member of the committee and, and you felt like this recommendation meets what you need.
One vendor, I ain't gonna say a hundred percent assure me, but one, you know, you look at one of the criteria, it's timeframe which we could be completed. And we could have communications up and going by the beginning of school.
Mr. Beasley, I can assure you right now, that there's no way. Mr. Beasley, I can assure you right now that there's no way anybody's going to get this done before school opens. And I'm not going to say why publicly right now, okay? There's problems here. And I can put that on the record, there's no way it's going to be done legally. Put it on the record right now, nobody can get it done. And I'm not going to say why. I'm just holding a few things in reserve.
Mr. McCullough, we've been doing the 27 things.
And we've done our homework. We've been working on this for two years. This isn't something we came up with over here. Sorry you feel different.
I understand. I understand. I mean, the company out of, with them had a lower bid than the one out of Charlotte.
But they weren't complying with the bid.
Well, how were they complying with the bid?
Do we need to go into?
Yeah, we probably need to.
I don't know if we need to go into comparing these bids here in open session.
Yeah, I'd like, and I apologize for interrupting.
I would suggest that, and I know you all know that this RFP is subject to the Virginia Public Careman Act, I would recommend that certain aspects of that be discussed in closed session under Virginia Code Section 2.237-1188.
Thank you. I would certainly defer to our legal counsel here. If we're going to enter into specifics of the bids, then we need to defer that until we go into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board.
Is there, is there an intent on the part of boards to offer a motion regarding the request? Does anyone want to offer a motion regarding?
And just to jump in again, apologies, I would suggest that we discuss that in closed session prior to the vote.
So that we need to make a motion that we go into closed?
No, it's already listed as an item under closed. And so we can just discuss that later and move on with the agenda of the, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to do that.
Okay, then we will, we will, under a closed session, have additional discussion regarding this. This time, we'll move on to Section 8, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Cotton?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On a much lighter note, we have some highlights from June 2018 that I'd like to share with the board and the community. The first item, a blast from the past. On May 21st, Campbell Court Elementary students welcomed a group of special visitors. Former Campbell Court Elementary students, who are members of the class of 2018 from Bassett High School, came and walked through the building. The Bassett High School seniors received high fives, fist bumps, and congratulatory remarks from Campbell Court, students and staff. Afterward, teachers talked to their classes about how, with hard work and perseverance, they too will graduate and become an inspiration to others. And all of our seniors did this this year, which was a great new tradition. Becoming one with nature, third graders at Dream Mason visited the 4H Center in Reedsville to learn more about predator and prey relationships and a pond habitat recently. Their exploratory field experience helped bring to light the discussions they had had in class this semester regarding animal habitats. Dedication, GW Carver Elementary was honored to be able to dedicate the track to Samuel Trot, the Samuel Trot Track, that's hard to say. On May 22nd, in honor of Mr. Samuel Trot, former teacher, coach, assistant principal, and member to, and mentor to many students in Henry County. Speaking at the event were Mr. Curtis Milner, Dr. Joe DeValt, all GW Carver students were out on the track to witness the event with inviting guests from the community. A new way to review, students at the Metta View Elementary use math manipulatives, kinesthetic movement, and student-led discussions to improve math comprehension as they were reviewing their math SOLs at the end of the school year. Their hard work paid off as they were well-prepared for the important assessment. Sliding into summer fun, Mount Olivet Elementary, Mount Olivet staff members were on hand at this spring's Slide Into Summer Family Summit to distribute books and stickers. Young readers were encouraged to play games that matched rhyming words and initial sounds as they visited the Motown table. The event was a great end of the year activity for all HCPS families and community members. Mobile gem mining, students at Rich Acres Elementary struck gold in May. Daniel Boone Mobile Gem Mining came to family night, and students found gems and pyrite, also known as fool's gold. Students, parents, and teachers were excited to use the sleuths to find treasures. Miners were presented with a classifying chart and a map to show where in the world their gems were found. Many fifth graders were excited to find some of the rocks and minerals they had read about in science. Faith in Action Day, Sambal Elementary was the fortunate beneficiary of voluntary cleanup and green activities during our local faith-based community's Faith in Action Day this spring. Members of Rich Acres Christian Church and the Community Fellowship worked together to beautify the grounds around the school. Journey Through the United States, Ms. Corbin's second-grade class at Stanley Town Elementary learned about the United States by traveling with Ms. Corbin's parents around the lower 48 states through photos, brochures, and care packages, and participating in a live Google chat with two students, relatives in Alaska and Hawaii this semester. Students were able to incorporate geography, map skills, math mileage, literature, balto, and history into their study of US. Animal-based learning, recently Laurel Park Middle School students visited Infinity Acres Ranch in Ridgeway. Students enjoyed their visit to the ranch, especially the petting zoo, and holding a tarantula. Metta View on the move. The move to Metta View has begun. With all classroom supplies boxed up and ready to go, the members of the facilities maintenance team are working to move furniture and supplies over to Metta View now. It's exciting to see how quickly the building has transformed, and we are now pleased to now be preparing for students. Congratulations to the following staff members who are recognized with Starfish Awards this quarter. Bassett High School's Kim Craig was nominated by Colley. Laurel Park Middle School's Susan Hampton was nominated by Parent. Bassett Track Coach and Stanley Town Elementary teacher Kevin Underwood was nominated by a parent of a member of the track team. And Collinsville Primary's Wendy Gilbert, who was also nominated by a parent. Congratulations to these folks. We do have other items in my section that I'll be glad to answer questions about if there are questions from the board.
Any questions for Dr. Cotton regarding other items under Superintendent's Report? If not, we'll move on to matters from the board. Are there matters individually from board members that need to be presented today? If not, we'll move to reminder of upcoming dates. Couple of meetings I call everyone's attention to. June 21st, the special board meeting to close out the fiscal year. That's at nine o'clock here. On July 26th, the annual school board planning session, which will be held at Chatmos Country Club in Martinsville. I won't go through all of those conferences that are listed, but if you plan to attend, any of the ones that are listed on your agenda, please inform Ms. Overby so that she can take care of the registration process. At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for Section 2.2-3711, Print A, Print 1, Code of Virginia for discussion and consideration of appointments, transfers, reassignments, and separations of employees of Henry County Public Schools. Also, same section, Print A, Section 3, Code of Virginia for discussion of acquisition of real property for public purposes. And also, same section, Print A, Print 8, Code of Virginia for consultation with legal counsel. Some will, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to report to a closed session. Those in favor of this motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. We will meet upstairs in the boardroom.